This episode of Southeast Iowa Today is brought to you by Grinder Auto Body of Washington, Iowa. Using state-of-the-art techniques and decades of experience to get your car back on the road after an accident. Car Doctor of Washington, Iowa. No matter who Frankenstein it, they can fix it, clean it, and customize it. McDonald Boneyard of Kyoto, Iowa. For all your farm equipment and auto recycling needs. For great food, it's your choice. Your Choice Family Restaurant of Wayland, Iowa. Open Tuesday through Sunday. Come to our Cruze Inns this summer on the second Tuesday of the month, June through September. Girling Repair of Winfield, Iowa. If your mower is dead, call Fred, your Husqvarna, Aaron's, and Gravely dealer. Fred also fixes and sells snow blowers. B&amp;B Propane and the family of Jet Stops. CW Tree Trimming LLC. We're into your trees, not your wallet. Serving all of Henry County and the surrounding area. We offer a senior citizen and veteran discount. Dutch Market and Coffee Talk of Washington, Iowa. Dutch Market can handle all of your grocery needs, and they even have a conference room that you can use for free. Coffee Talk's drive-thru is open and ready to serve you coffee, energy drinks, sandwiches, baked goods, and ice cream. They all present you the award-winning Southeast Iowa Today. Here's the author of Christie's Journey, The Beat Goes On, and your host, John Bay.
Thank you, announcer Cody Roy of NewEnglandDukes.com for your golden pipes and wonderful introduction. It's Wednesday, September 24, 2025, and I'm outside the Jefferson County Courthouse in Fairfield, Iowa. The Board of Supervisors met this morning at 8:30 a.m. to discuss and consider attorney representation contract with Skylar Limkman, Attorney at Smith Mills Law. Elizabeth Esty, Assistant County Attorney for Jefferson County, was on hand at the supervisor's table along with Sheriff Bart Richmond. Supervisors Lee Demmett and Joe Ledger were at the table along with Supervisor Susie Drish via telephone. Jefferson County Attorney Chauncey Molding sat to my immediate right, as you will see and hear. And not to be left out, Abby Decline was recording the meeting minutes. Assistant County Attorney Esty shared her thoughts on an additional paragraph that the county attorney's office recommended be added to the agreement. Sheriff Richmond did not agree with that addition, and the supervisors spent well over an hour discussing it. Please note, other media did not attend this meeting, so to my friends in local media, if you report on this, please make sure to let your audience know your source or sources. It's the right thing to do. Here's how it went down.
September 24th. And Susie, John is here, Elizabeth is here, Bart is here. John is here, and Bart's wife is here. Christie's here. Abby's here, Joe's here, and I'm here, and you're on the phone. Not feeling too peachy keen.
Do you know, was, are they gonna attend?
I got an email that said he was out of the office till the 26th.
I just didn't know, because I assumed that he got a couple of red light touches. I just didn't know if he had any thoughts or concerns about it.
I just, when I sent it, and it came back, says, "I'm traveling." I'm sorry. Thank you for your email, and now the office traveling for client matters through September 26th. I will just run the non-emergency emails.
I saw that, but he has responded in the past to that. But I just didn't know. Did you hear anything, Bart?
No.
Okay, okay. So, I'm not sure how he feels about the changes, or if he wanted to. But I'm happy to explain if you guys have any questions.
Well, I think, I think they're self-explanatory, and I agree with the changes. I don't personally have problems with the changes. There's nothing that I see in there that is out of the ordinary. After all, in his original document, he does state that we are the client. Being services to Jefferson County, which, and he puts in parentheses, "client." And so your comment of your statement, confidentiality to Jefferson County and the firm, is correct, because we are the client. You referenced Iowa Code, both ADF and 331.756. And when I talked to Bart, I had some concerns early on about the transcripts of stuff, and then we talked, and I said, "That's why we hired Mr. Thomas." And so all of, you know, all of that information should be prepared, in my opinion, by him. But irregardless, as I, again, as I explained to Bart, there is a $5,000 cap.
Okay. That was, that was one of my questions. Is that the cap on the attorney's services, or is it a cap on everything? Just because I saw that there are other, you know, like, legal assistance, paralegal assistance, so I just.
Well, my comment to the paralegal was, if he uses a paralegal for 10 hours, that's $900. That leaves him $4,100. It's a $5,000 cap, which is what our motion was.
Okay. And I didn't see that reflected in the contract, so I didn't know.
He had, let's see, what page was that?
Did I miss something?
Well.
I saw that client has approved up to total of 20 hours of attorney services. So that's why I was wondering if we're saying.
Somewhere in here, if I can find it.
Okay.
Let me see. I thought it was spelled out in there, too. I thought it was, I'm looking to. Or did I just assume that through our conversations?
I just wanted to make sure that was clear, if it was, you were capping attorney services at that specific rate, or you were capping all of the firm's total costs.
Ah, my first oversight, I don't see it. Oh, it was there, I can. So there's the. So they did state that the attorney will not incur transcript expenses without communicating with Jefferson County Sheriff, and confirming the need for said transcripts. I don't see it, Elizabeth.
I just wanted to bring our attention to it, if that needed to be clarified, and you wanted it spelled out, or how you, how you wanted to proceed there.
Well, and I did send an email out. Of course, I realize emails are not legal documents, and I understand that. The attorney and firm will not be obligated to continue representation once the cap specified in Section 4 has been reached.
Okay.
And.
And that just caps, it caps attorney services at the attorney rate, and it doesn't address any kind of legal assistance or paralegal services? So if you want to specify.
Well, he says, "With developments such as the discovery of new facts unforeseen, legal changes, changes in the adverse party's position regarding case yada, 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 that is initially believed to be fairly simple, can become complex and require much more time and expense than originally anticipated. Notwithstanding, client has approved up to a total of 20 hours of attorney services at the attorney rate of $250 per hour. Nothing in this agreement precludes the client from considering and authorizing additional attorney fees." We don't pay a general retainer, we don't pay advanced fees or anything of that nature. I mean, we can, we can, what's the word, okay, before? Define that better, if you think it needs to be defined better. But in the email that I sent out, let's see. I was reviewing the contract the attorney sent before placing on the agenda and wanted to make it abundantly clear that $5,000 cap is in place when the amount is attorney of $250 per hour, paralegal of $90. The total allowed expense is $5,000. I'm glad to see that they can do work for ICAP if offered by ICAP to do so. They do acknowledge the contract of $5,000 cap. I do want to point out that on Page 4, Paragraph 5, included below, that the $5,000 limit will also include any additional fees and costs. The contract does point out that the attorney will communicate before incurring those costs. The board will determine the need, if any, at that time. And he writes in there that the attorney will not incur transcript expenses without communicating with the Jefferson County Sheriff, and confirming the need for said transcripts.
Okay. Well, do you, do you think that that is, do you think that the contract's? I mean, I, I think that maybe it should be further clarified if there's a specific dollar cap, but if you feel comfortable with it, then.
I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page, whether it's the Board of Supervisors, or whether it's the attorney, or whether it's Bart, that there's a $5,000 cap.
Right.
However, we need to express that. That was a motion.
We don't spell out the $5,000, but it says 20 hours at $250. So do you think we should have the $5,000?
And, you know, this is not, that's kind of like parsing. I guess the only thing that I was looking at is it says the attorney rate, but then there's also a legal assistant, paralegal rate. So I, I guess I was questioning whether you were saying capping all expenses, or again, you know, and so that was my, that was my question.
Well, my intent of my amendment to Joe's motion was it was to be a flat cap.
Okay. Well, maybe, and so I, I feel, I can, I can include that, and then I can send any, you know, the changes that we make based on our discussion today to Skylar, and then maybe he will get back to us when it's convenient to him, and let us know if that is not necessary, or what his thoughts are.
And my understanding, and I had a conversation with, with Bart, my understanding is that we hired Mr. Thomas to do the administrative investigation. So the transcripts, the recordings, whatever would be needed at that point, should be covered under the $3,500 fee that he's charging.
It does say that fees, costs, or expenses for workforce solutions would be paid separately for the client, so.
Yeah.
And not covered here, so, yeah, that's separate.
And so I think, I, my opinion is, and it's just an opinion, my opinion is, and I have expressed this to Bart, that he's to oversee the process, but wouldn't actually be involved in the, what, I want to say, the nitty-gritty of the investigation, because that's what we hired Mr. Thomas for.
Yes, yes, for sure. So, and we don't need it, and that's a separate, somebody has a separate agreement, so we don't.
Although I will readily admit, I have not seen an agreement from Mr. Thomas, that I remember, but then I'm old. Did we get an agreement from Mr. Thomas?
I, I have no idea.
Okay.
Can I talk now, or are you, can I interject? I have some problems with on Page 2. What you inserted in there.
Got it, yeah.
The firm will consult with the county attorney prior to representing the client or its officers in any filings, hearings, proceedings, activities. That. Why should he be included? It's, there's client privilege, I mean, between the client and them. Why should he be included in this?
Well, so, and that's kind of why I included this big paragraph here, because, so first of all, and the client, I think, is Jefferson County, right?
Yes, he says.
So that's what he says here. He says the client's Jefferson County, and then he says that, and then later he says that there's an attorney-client privilege and confidentiality between the sheriff's office and the firm. And so I just wanted to clarify that it's Jefferson County is the client, so you guys hold the privilege. But my understanding, and Bart, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the reason why Skylar was being hired was to provide legal counsel and, or his guidance, and not that the proceedings were going to, not the confidentiality of the proceedings, I guess. Also, under Iowa Code, the county attorney has specific statutory duties, including, like, representing the county and its officers in any legal filings, and any proceedings in front of the court. Obviously, Skylar is being hired to, to assist with some oversee, or, you know, assist or represent the county.
But he was hired two and a half weeks ago, it was approved by the board, according to Iowa Code.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the conflict.
Absolutely.
You remember that code section?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
And, and why would you insert yourself into another attorney's contract when there's a conflict? You know, that, that's the issue right there. Let's not cloud everything, all this other bullshit.
Let her finish, Bart, she won't listen.
Elizabeth, no.
Yeah, yeah.
You, they approved it according to Iowa Code. It was signed last May by the governor.
Right, yeah, no, absolutely.
It was a conflict with the board or another public official, and they agreed, two to one.
Right.
There it is. So there's a conflict.
Yes.
They agreed with it, but why would you insert yourself back into a contract with another attorney? That doesn't make any sense. Why would we go to all this trouble?
If you let her finish, it might make sense, Bart, it might make sense.
To keep the conflict away from your office.
Right.
But you, you, you just clouded with all this other crap.
Okay, I understand, and I, I don't, I guess I don't understand why you're so upset that I'm trying to clarify that statutorily.
This, this contract with Skylar, it's been out over two weeks.
I have not seen it.
Well, that isn't my fault.
Our office hasn't seen it. I don't, I mean, it was just given to me on Monday.
You had to know about it.
I had no idea, how would I do know about?
Because they approved it on the 8th.
This contract?
They approved to hire Skylar on the 8th. And you knew damn well there was going to be a contract out.
But, but, but the county attorney has specific statutory duties, including representing the county in all legal actions. We can't.
What legal actions are you talking about?
I'm saying if there.
What legal actions are you talking about? You're clouding the whole thing.
I'm not clouding the whole thing, Bart. This scope of services includes representation in any courts.
This was approved on the 8th, because of Iowa Code.
Well, I hadn't seen the contract, so I was just providing my edits. You, as the board, are allowed to do, as you see fit. I just feel like there are statutory duties that the county attorney has. I tried to include that language here in the contract. Our office had not seen the contract prior to Monday. This is the first time that I'm reviewing it. I understand that Skylar has already been hired to provide this guidance and assistance. Again, my understanding, and I think the office's understanding, that he was providing legal assistance, not that every single action that was taken was going to be completely confidential from our office, because we would be involved.
I propose we, we sign the original contract from Smith Mills Law.
So it's my understanding that the board thought that there was a conflict with the advice my office might provide to the sheriff? And so that's why Mr. Linkman was asked to be hired by Bart, and you guys approved. So the concern over provided advice is one thing, and that's why this contract exists. If Bart is asking for, for some reason, secret representation between him and another attorney boxing out the county, then I have questions as to why that conversation and any representation would need to be confidential from the county.
Very transparent.
Because that.
I come to the board.
Well, and that is something that I do believe the county should be concerned about. If what this contract is implying is that you're the client, but there is going to be confidential conversations happening that you don't have access to. So, I mean, it all comes down to county liability and just making sure that there's transparency, so that you know. I mean, wouldn't you want to know what kind of legal actions are going on? How would you know if your county attorney is not, like, at least copied in on those? Not saying that we're going to be opining or giving any kind of legal advice, but just so that we know, hey, this is what's going on, or hey, these are the policies and procedures that we're recommending are going to be changed. We're filing something in the court. I mean, the scope of services is broad. If you want to lessen, if you want to limit the scope of services, I guess that's one thing. But if he's going to be representing the sheriff's office in any actions in court, that's where it kind of interferes with the statutory duties of the county attorney.
I think you're getting ahead of yourself. I think you're getting way ahead of yourself.
Bart, the scope of services get, I am responding directly to the scope of services in this contract.
And what confidential information are you talking about?
I don't know.
Because employee records are not going to be talked about.
I don't know, Bart, but if it, if there is a confidentiality between the sheriff's office and the firm, there is a big problem with that.
Why?
Because the county attorney.
Do you, do you have to know everybody I talked to and what I talked to them about? What is, what is the issue here, Elizabeth?
Do not care. I do not care personally. I don't want to interject in anything. I'm just saying, if this were to go forward, and the scope of services does indicate that perhaps the firm would be representing the sheriff's office.
If there was something you needed to know about along the way, you'll be told.
That's why I'm saying, and that is what I'm.
Because they already determined there was a conflict by Iowa Code.
I have no.
And they agreed to hire his firm.
Absolutely, but this is the contract, and so as the county, from the county attorney's office, we're going to be reviewing the contract. They don't understand why there's a concern there. We're protecting the county's interests and make sure that there's nothing that there's.
What is the actual concern?
The law.
What about the law?
The concern, that's why we're including the.
You are inserting yourself after you got removed from it. They voted on it. And you're, you're upset, and you want to put yourself back in the contract.
I think you're the one that's upset, Bart.
Now, now, you know, we can, we can talk all day, you can delay this again, another week.
And I don't have to sign the contract either.
Why, yes, you don't.
That's right. Now, let's calm down here.
I feel very uncomfortable with the tone of this meeting.
My concern is that the attorney, Mr., however you pronounce his last name, from Smith Mills Law Firm, states in his original contract, "It is a written attorney-client fee agreement. We, Smith Mills Law, will provide, provide limited legal services to Jefferson County, to you. We are the client. The county is the client." That's what he's stating. That's not what she said. It's not what I said. Our motion, when we passed this, was to cap it at $5,000. This has grown legs for whatever reason. It says, "The Jefferson County Board of Supervisors retains attorney Skylar J. Men, of the firm, to provide limited legal representation and services for the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office. We retain him, according to his contract." He wrote that.
And there's reason he's doing that. Because of Henry County.
Well, that may be fine, but it names us as the client, and that he is representing us. He says so. And so all I'm saying is, is that the client, this is what he's saying, us, agrees that the firm and its attorneys will exercise independent professional judgment, and will provide the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office with advice and counsel without interference. We didn't strike that. We're not disagreeing with that. But he's saying that we, Jefferson County, are agreeing to that by signing this contract. Elizabeth inserted in here, "Iowa Code, engagement of outside counsel pursuant to this contract by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors, under Iowa Code, Chapter ADF, is limited to representation of the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, as identified below." She's just simply saying that it's limited to this particular set of circumstances. The contract does not restrict or relieve the county, and the key here is, or relieve the county attorney from engaging in any of the statutory duties imposed on him by the virtue of his office. So we're just simply saying here is, is that he's still obligated to defend us. He, just like he's obligated to be involved in, in the current case that we've got going on, even though ICAP is running the case. Same thing would apply here, if a circumstance, I'm not saying that it will, or that it's imminent. I'm just saying that if circumstances were to dictate that ICAP had to become involved, he would still be involved, and we'd be kept apprised of everything that's going on. And if Mr. Limkman, Limpan, was the one that ICAP chose to pursue, or whatever, that's all well and fine, that's up to ICAP. We goes on to say that, "including but not limited to enforcing and prosecuting state law or county ordinances, and appearing for the county in all cases and proceedings in courts of the county, in which the county is a party." That, there's nothing there that indicates anything other than what the responsibility is, which is what he currently is doing in another court proceeding.
And that language is taken directly from the code.
Right. So the other thing, and that you're concerned there, Joe, when he talks, "The firm will consult with the county attorney prior to representing the client, or its officers in any filings, hearings, proceedings, or any activities in any, any federal, state, or local courts." We should absolutely want that. We know ahead of time, because we're going to, at this point in time, if it gets to that point, I'm anticipating that we're on the phone to ICAP. This was the understanding, that Mr.
Limpan.
Limpan. Is not going to handle any of that. That's the reason that we have the errors and omissions and the law enforcement clause in our insurance. They handle that. That in response, and he's, he's, he's doing his, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, in the, in performing his duties and responsibilities, he's covered. And this is what he's doing now, trying to ferret all of this out. With everything that's going on, with some, some personnel matters. There's, there is, if I'm not mistaken, some criminal matters that are involved in it as well, which is not being handled directly by his office, nor by this individual. We hired an outside entity to do the administrative investigation, specifically for the purpose of, so that if in, in, at some point in the future, if Bart has to administer discipline, he has been insulated, so to speak, my words, not, okay? From the process that led up to this point. So all we're saying here is, is that if it's going to go to court, we want our county attorney involved in it, we want ICAP involved in it, and the firm will also copy the county attorney on any communication between the firm and its client or its officers. We're going to have access to that stuff. ICAP's going to want access to it.
If it goes that far.
Sure.
Yeah, if it goes that far.
So why, why include him now? If we get that far, then they will be brought up to speed on everything.
Why hide things?
If it's not written out, then there's no requirement in the future to provide it, because there's nothing in the contract that we signed that requires a cap.
And I guess if you want to limit the scope of his services, you could do it that way, or, but, I mean, I guess why not just allow for him, if necessary, to make sure that the county attorney is apprised of these things?
And I also ask Bart to make sure that both Mr. Thomas and Limpan are, keeps Christine and Darcy up there, because there are HR. And they need to be, well, Christie's sitting there, but they need to be apprised of what's going on as well, because it is an employee-employee relationship issue. And, you know, I mean, Bart keeps personnel records better than anybody, as far as it comes. That's, that's not the issue. I'm just saying that HR needs to be apprised of what's going on, and I know he's been in communication with Chelsea? Chelsea? So, okay? It's like he's, he's spoken to her. To me, there isn't, for me personally, you can't require something after the fact, if it's not in the agreement. That's all.
The whole thing is, Lee, I haven't been insulated the last year and a half, and it involved an employee issue, a discipline issue. And I wasn't insulated. Now, I'm, I'm up against a. Now, I'm, I'm up against another sit, same, similar situation. And obviously, the county attorney's office is gonna argue against me every step of the way.
Yep, that's-
They are gonna argue against me. They're not in my favor, and they're, they're never gonna be.
But the question, the question is this, though, Bart. Based on the representation contract that he submitted, we are the client.
There's a reason for that.
Yes.
Because of what Henry County did to his law firm.
Well, I don't know what Henry County did to his law firm. I can't be held accountable for what Henry County does. I can only be held accountable for what we do. And for me personally, I don't see anything here. It spells out what his scope of services are. He spelled it out. There is, I mean, it's, it's, none of that's been struck. He, we hire the attorney to represent the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office regarding administrative investigations and potential disciplinary actions of two employees of the Sheriff's Office. Representation includes administrative investigations, related investigation activities, including witness interviews or interviews of officers as defined under Section ADF, conducted under Iowa Code ADF Point One, and a, any pre-discipline hearings or proceedings that may arise, and other related discipline meetings, hearings, or proceedings. Representation includes participation in the administrative matters review of evidence and policies and oversight of the administrative investigation, Workforce Solutions LLC. Representation will include providing advice, recommendations, guidance, and counsel through the completion of any administrative investigation and proceedings, if applicable. Representations may include other representation activities, including drafting or revising documents, correspondence, research, communicating with the employees' legal counsel, and/or employee representatives, communicating with others involved, communicating with others involved, including activities attorney believes are necessary in his professional judgment and discretion. Attorney and firm will not be obligated to continue representation once the cap specified in Section Four herein has been exhausted. There's the scope of services. Nothing in this agreement changes what he put in there for his scope of services. And when we sign this document, if we sign it, those scope of services is what he's saying he's going to do for you, and you accept it. Those scope of services.
Okay.
So, and it says, "The scope of his representation is limited to pre-suit activities." Okay? Which I agree a hundred and fifty percent with him, because at that point, ICAP is going to take over. But the information that he's gathered, okay, if it's, if a lawsuit arises, okay, i- his activities are, are, is limited to pre-suit activities and does not cover litigation or appeals of any kind. We have to have, as the client, access to that information to be able to defend ourself in any action that may be required.
Access to what information, Lee?
Huh?
Access to what information?
All of it.
All of what?
I don't know. Whatever he says, correspondence, research, communicating employees, legal counsel, employees' representatives, communicating with others involved, including activities attorney believes are necessary in professional judgment. The scope of activities, you know, the, if he has all this information, he can't walk away from it. We're the client. And if we have to go to ICAP and hire, I don't know, him maybe, I don't know, but attorneys to represent the sheriff's office and the county in, in, in a, in a proceeding, all of the information has to be available to be able to litigate it properly. That, to me, that's common sense. And what he's doing in here is he's simply making sure that, as I read this, that "Representation will include providing advice, recommendations, guidance, and counsel." He's protecting you by use, by this. And we're saying, yes. "Representation will include providing advice, recommendations, guidance, and counsel through the completion of any administrative investigation and proceedings, if applicable."
And it's limited to pre-suit activity?
Yes.
There you go.
And we agree to that.
And why wouldn't the original one be signed? I don't know why we have to put additions to his contract and involve more people.
We're not involving anybody. What we're saying here is, is, is that he has a statutory duty. We, as the client, have a we, as a client, have a right to know.
I have a duty too, as the sheriff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. But we are the client. And so, all we're saying, or at least what I'm saying, I don't put words in Joe Rissouli's mouth, what I'm saying is, is that for me, we're being represented by the client. We're the ones that are going to get sued. And we have to have this information available to us to be able to defend the county and to defend you. ICAP attorneys are gonna have to have it.
Why are you getting ahead of yourself on that?
I, I, you, it's just what I just said to Joe. You can't come back after the fact and demand something that you didn't have in a contractual agreement. That's all. I can't come back and demand that he represents you in, in the scope of services if those scope of services aren't listed. He doesn't have a requirement to provide those services if it's not listed in the contract. We didn't strike those services, nor are we asking those services to be struck. It's very clear what he's going to do for you or on behalf of you. And we agree with those scope of services. And it says, "Nothing in this agreement precludes ICAP assigning defensive claims on behalf of the client to attorney," meaning that on-
But he's got a scope of services.
Yes.
Why would he consult the county attorney's office if he has a scope of services?
He doesn't have to consult. He just needs to let us know.
That's in there. That, you put that in there.
Well, prior to representing the client, for sure, because we have a, a, well, not say we, I will say the county attorney has a statutory duty to represent the county and its officers and any kind of proceeding in court. So, that's why I was just saying, he has to be consulted, because that's his statutory duty. Now, again, maybe, like you said, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but we just need to have that in there. If that, he is going to be representing the sheriff's office in any kind of proceeding.
It, it's pre-suit activity.
He says-
And does not cover litigation or appeals of any kind.
In his contract-
I mean, that's very clear.
In his contract, he states that he wrote this, "Until client and the firm make a different agreement in writing, this agreement will govern all services the firm may perform for the client. The firm shall diligently represent client and will conform to the rules of professional conduct and state bar of Iowa and duties of attorneys." And the client's duties, that we agree to be truthful with the firm, to cooperate fully with the firm, to keep the firm informed of all relevant information and developments. Shouldn't that be a two-way street? If we're required to provide to him and keep him informed of all relevant information and developments to abide by this agreement, obviously, he wants his bills paid too. I mean, all we're simply saying here is, is that I, I, I think what you're having concerns about is the firm will consult with the county attorney prior to representing the client or its officers in any filings, hearings, or proceedings, or activities in any, in any federal, state, or local courts. Well, we need that confer, confer, confirmation and conversation to have the information to ICAP. Whether ICAP hires him or not, or somebody else, okay, we need to be consulted in that regard. I mean, and that's all it's saying here, is that any activities in any federal, state, or local courts.
Myself, I think you're trying to read too much into it.
I'm just reading what's written.
Yes, but he is hired to oversee the other attorney. So, he shouldn't be making any decisions or anything, correct? Am I wrong?
Hired to oversee what other attorney?
This, this Lindman is to make sure everything is going correctly. He's not gonna be doing any depositions or whatever. Am I mixed up?
Yeah, you are, because he states in here that there could be transcripts and stuff. He would notify us prior to doing those transcripts.
If the other attorney is doing-
No, that's not what he's saying here in the scope of services. I just read you what his scope of services are.
Yes.
Okay?
But I thought he was hired to oversee the other-
What other attorney?
The Workforce Solutions, is that correct?
So, he is not an attorney. He's just the investigator. So, but then Mr. Lindman would be, I guess, overseeing that, yes, but then also providing guidance to the sheriff's office about how to proceed after that investigation is completed.
That's, that's my take on it. He would only be actively doing stuff. Am I reading it wrong?
Well, then he will never have to consult with the county attorney. Right? I mean, you know, we have that in there just to protect the county. And then also, honestly, I mean, the county attorney does have some statutory duties. He can't be completely boxed out from performing those statutory duties.
I mean, you're right, Joe. He's saying here, "It includes administrative investigations, related investigation activities, including witness interviews, interviews of officers as defined, conducted, yada, 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 any pre-disciplinary hearings or proceedings that may arise, and other related discipline meetings, hearings, or proceedings." "Representation includes participation in the administrative matters review of evidence and policies, oversight of the administrative investigation, which is Workforce Solutions that you just referenced." "Representation will include providing advice, recommendation, guidance, and counsel through the completion of any administrative investigation and proceedings, if applicable."
Sorry, I was just gonna say, if I may, Lee, I could, I could give you an example that it's pretty timely. So, let's say that, and obviously, this is very theoretical. Who knows if we're gonna get to that point, but this is included in the scope of services. If there is a complaint to the ICRC and then the EGOC, right? And then there are any hearings or any responses that are generated by Mr. Lindman, you would probably want to be notified, I would imagine. And that would be a pre-litigation hearing or pre-litigation responses. That would happen prior to any lawsuit being filed.
And we've had those filed three times.
Yes.
On three different employees since I've been here. And so, and that would not be a reflection upon Mr. Lindman or, for that matter, John Thomas. I mean, they have their right, you know, to do that. That doesn't necessarily mean that it would go, you, you know, I, I mean, it, it, I agree with you on one level, you know, we're, we're getting far afield here. The scope of services are laid out as what he's going to provide. And, and it, it goes through the investigation process. And to make sure that he's covered, that there aren't any missteps. And that at, you know, and at that point, he's documenting all of that. If we end up having to be defended in court because an employee brings a suit and he ends up having to be defended in court, we need that information. And if I'm not mistaken, and maybe I am, but there's, there's certain aspects of that investigation that would be, um, what do you call it in legal terms, that you have to disclose it or, or whatever?
Discoverable?
Yeah, is it discoverable?
Yeah.
So-
Why wouldn't Workforce Solutions already have that information? Are they not gonna be able to bring it forward? The first attorneys that we use?
They're not attorneys. Or is it Workforce Solutions?
Who's Workforce Solutions?
Yeah, it's not an, he's not an attorney.
But his information could be brought forward.
I don't know what that contract looks like. I don't know if that information is being disclosed to you guys or what.
I haven't seen the contract.
I mean, I have no idea. Yeah, so, I don't know.
It was, it was agreed that it was, that it should be an outside entity that conducts the investigation. By, you know, Chauncey thought of that as a, where it goes well, and Bart put on that outside investigation.
So, there's no contract with this Workforce Solutions or anything?
Bart has a contract.
Yeah, okay. And that information would be brought forward if we move on?
Have you guys seen the contract?
I have not, no.
Oh, okay. Are you not the, are you entering into the contract, who's entering into the contract?
I assume the sheriff's office did.
Who's paying for it?
I don't know.
Who's paying for it?
I don't know. I don't know. Who's paying for it?
So-
Who is paying for it? Is it your office?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, it's thirty-five hundred dollars, as I recall, right? And so, um, and I just, you know, I, I'm assuming the interviews and so on and so forth, and and then he will make, I don't know if he makes a recommendation or just provides you that information from the results of his investigation. And I know-
I think he's still gathering information, right? Tyler, John, myself, we don't have all the information yet. That's being withheld. Everything, witness statements, videos, everything's being withheld.
Okay.
We don't have it.
Who's withholding it?
Well, Waukato County Attorney has it and Jefferson County Attorney has it.
We outsourced it to Waukato, um, because, you know, we're conflicted, and so we couldn't handle those, those criminal charges. It was investigated by the state tracers.
I'm thinking.
Iowa State.
So, what do you wanna do? We, we beat this-
I think this, this other paragraph ought to be deleted. Criminal consult with county attorney prior to representing the client or its officers. That entire paragraph should be deleted.
And again, I included that just because of the county attorney's statutory duties pursuant to his office. If there's going to be no representation, then I guess it won't have to be invoked. But you would want that just to protect yourselves so that you're copied on other, other information, and then all of, um, any filings or anything of that nature.
That's where I have the problems with this second page paragraph that was inserted.
Well, would you prefer to limit his scope of representation or just allow him to copy the county attorney on, on some of these things and consult with him? Just because, again, it's by law, the county attorney has specific obligations by virtue of his office, so I guess I don't understand why, if, if, if that's not needed, if he never needs to consult him because he's never gonna be representing anybody in any proceedings or activities, then then, then great. I, I don't understand why you want, wouldn't want to include that just to protect yourselves so that you are given notice of these things and you have all the information.
I don't know what you're protecting yourself from.
Litigation that could potentially occur sometime down the road. Isn't that why you get an attorney? I mean-
Well, I mean, yeah, I under- that's the issue, because we're the client. Meaning the county. Of course, the county is gonna be sued irregardless, but, um, I mean, I don't, I guess I don't know that he actually would be representing the client, which would be us in any filings or hearings. It does say, "Representation does not include Jefferson County in any other matters or proceedings."
We ready to move on, you think, Lady?
Well, I'm gonna ask Elizabeth a question here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Client agrees to authorize firm to communicate with client regarding this matter via email and understands that email communications may not be secure or private. Client understands communications connected on all computers and networks may not be confidential. Rest of that is milling. So, yeah, we can move on. I mean, So, yeah, we can move on, I mean, make a decision one way or the other, how you wanna proceed.
If, um, I unfortunately have another hearing that I have to attend to, so if you wanna just let me know what you decide about the contract, if you want me to include that five thousand dollar cap on all legal fees, then I I can do that, um, again, we, I never heard from Skylar, so don't know, you know, I haven't gotten his take on these edits, um.
He sent an email.
He did?
Yeah.
Just now, was it in response to my email?
I suppose.
Okay, I just didn't.
Included you and Lee.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll see if I can find it and then we'll see what he, uh. What are his, uh, did he have any specific thoughts, Bart?
I read the email.
Okay, okay.
Do you wanna make a comment about what you're looking at there or not?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna check my email to see what Skylar said, I apologize, that's what I was doing here.
No, I did know if you had a comment about that or not, so.
Nope, nope, I just was, um, logging into my email and I apologize, okay.
Well, I guess I just will step, put my foot out into the water.
Okay, to respond to your question in the word document, the cap was for the attorney's fees. So if a, and then if a pre-discipline, a lot of mail hearing is needed for either both both employees, it would require me to travel to Fairfield, so there would be travel expenses. Mileage is at the IRS rate, the firm's representation agreement that it enters into with other clients, including municipalities, all separate out attorney's fees from expenses. I'm fine with getting approval for expenses in excess of the five thousand dollar cap in advance from the sheriff or chair of the board, if that makes the county feel more comfortable. If the bill won't exceed five thousand, then that shouldn't be an issue, but obviously, it is a topic to predict, especially with this involving two separate employees. I have concerns about the additions in the paragraph on page two and would not be in agreement with those. I don't know if he's available to to talk to you guys or if you'd like to meet him and or make a decision today, of course, it's up to you. So he's not in agreement with the changes on paragraph, uh, page two, which seems to be what everybody's having a problem with. So I don't know if you wanna speak with him about that or how you'd like to proceed. But, um, seems like maybe there's some more details regarding that that five thousand dollar cap that I don't know if he.
I'm in agreement with putting the five thousand dollar cap figure in there.
Okay.
That's the way we, that was our motion, that's the way we agreed to that.
Okay, all right, it sounds like maybe there would be some travel expenses that might be outside of that, um. So, I'm not sure, and I apologize, but Chauncey's here to.
I. I figure that should be included in the five thousand.
I do, I do too, I don't, I don't.
Five thousand is five thousand.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I'm sorry, I do, but Chauncey can take over if you have any other questions, just let me know.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
If he spent ten hours at at his, and he had other expenses, and it comes in, like he said, it comes in less than five thousand, we're good. But I can't imagine, quite frankly, why, um, we would use over twenty hours to begin with, but I think you're right, the motion was to cap it at five thousand dollars. I think the intent of the board was to cap it all the expenses at five thousand dollars, and so I agree, we need to spell that out. As far as the second page paragraph is concerned, I'm not gonna lose any sleep on it over one way or the other, except I think it's important to note that we are the client. And that there exists and must exist an attorney-client privilege. Now, that's not what this second paragraph says, and so, okay, um. I'm not sure why he has an objection to it in terms of, um, you know, we need to be apprised of anything if it's going to federal, state, or local courts, in my estimation.
Which is all pre-suit activities, it's nothing beyond that. He 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 says that in there. I mean, I think you're getting way ahead of yourselves on that one thing.
But if I admit, okay.
And this does involve confidential employee records.
Well, I.
And that's something that, um, you can't be privy to.
Oh, yes, I can. Yes, I can, absolutely, handbook's very clear on that. Management. And, but I'm not going down that road at this particular moment in time, but that's not the issue. If you wanna strike that paragraph, she's gotta take some things back and make some adjustments anyway.
I would like to strike that paragraph, that's my thoughts, do we need a motion to do that, or?
At this point in time, I'm so damn confused, I don't know what we need.
I would be willing.
So I think what what we we, I think the motion should be, we we go, okay, so you want that paragraph taken out?
I would like that paragraph taken out.
And we want it, the contract to specifically spell out that it's a five thousand dollar cap on all fees and services.
That is correct, that is the way, if original motion was, that's the way I expect it to be.
Okay, those are the only changes, um. You know, Bart has indicated that, you've indicated that, Mr. He needs to have a simpler name pronounced, indicated that, Skylar, I apologize, Skylar, I wanna use your first name, it's easier for me. Okay, so, um, what we're asking the county attorney's office to do is revise the agreement by removing the second paragraph and defining all fees and services under five thousand.
I guess that's what my motion is.
Any further discussion, Suzie?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I thought she was sleeping.
Yes.
I heard some snoring a while ago and I didn't think it was Abby.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is. Anyway, anyway, let's go on, Suzie.
So, do you, you got any, you wanna say anything, you got any comments?
Not this time.
Okay, um. So the motion is to s- is to strike the sec, the par, to this, to strike the added paragraph on page two of the contract and define, um, the five thousand dollar cap as pertaining to all legal fees and services.
Can I make a comment on paragraph two?
Sure.
Paragraph two is to keep the client informed as to the scope of services and what's going on. It's my understanding that the sheriff requested outside guidance from an attorney other than me because he felt like there's a conflict, that he has a conflict with the advice given by my office. That outside attorney was approved by the board, Mr. Linkman, to provide that guidance to the sheriff. Now it feels like, in addition to outside guidance, the sheriff is requesting essentially that the county be boxed out from any decisions, advice, and, um, figuring as to what to do in this matter. I do have a concern that getting rid of paragraph two essentially ostracize or carves out some kind of confidential and secret from the county representation, and I don't know why that would be a necessity. The the paragraph only states to keep us, you, us, the county, informed as to what's going on, not to require us to approve or to provide input. So, if that's stricken, I'm concerned as to why, I don't know why you would want to have yourselves isolated from any legal things that are involving your county.
First thing, that didn't come from Bart, that come from me, that motion.
Right, right, I'm just, I'm just clarifying on on paragraph two, of page two there.
To clarify. Yes.
So is there something in that paragraph that you're particularly, um, concerned about?
Attorney-client privileges?
No, it says the firm will consult.
Yeah.
Okay, um, prior to representing.
Who who is the firm, that is the, Mr. Skylar Linkman?
Skylar's, Skylar. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, his his law firm.
Smith and.
Yeah.
Will consult with the county attorney prior to representing the client or its officers in any filings. Now, Bart's right when it say that it is somewhere here, I don't know what that, uh, scope of this representation is limited to pre-suit activities. But, I guess my question is, if we don't have if we're not able to consult, if we don't ha, as the client, we should be able to consult with the firm prior to any filings or hearings, not that he's gonna be involved in it because he's limited to pre-suit activities, but the information and stuff that he has that may be relevant to our ability to to defend ourselves, I don't know if that's, if that's not in there, if he's obligated to provide it. We are the client, he says so. So the client has a right to that information, I don't know, does it have to be spelled out?
Shouldn't, yeah, if it's not spelled out, where do we enforce that right?
Well, I don't know, because we're the client. Anyway. So. What in there is the bother besides the whole thing?
You summed it up, the whole thing.
Specifically.
That's that's my thoughts.
Yeah, okay.
If you don't like it, that's mine.
No, no, it's not a question of like or not like, I just would like to know, I just, where your concern lies.
I'm afraid there might be some influence on something. Maybe I'm wrong.
Well, I think. Maybe we need to meet with. Link, Link, Skylar.
Skylar, yeah.
Um, because where I'm where I'm at is, um. I personally wanna make sure that we have access to all of the information. If something, and I I agree with Bart, that that, you know, it's it's, um, pre-suit activities that that the firm will be involved in, but some of that information we may need if it moves beyond quote pre-suit activities.
What the, what the board could do is, it could approve the drafted amendment to the contract with the addition of the five thousand dollar cap, authorize the chair to sign and send to Mr. Linkman, and if Mr. Linkman has an issue with it, then we can set another meeting. He can either sign it or you guys could have a conversation with him.
The last sentence in this paragraph, the firm will also copy the county attorney on any communication between the firm and the client or its officers. The way that reads, they're gonna add add the county attorney to that.
Right, as a CC, just to provide information.
Yes, yes.
Not consulting, just not keeping it confidential from your lawyer.
Everybody's looking at me.
Well, I just, so, Chauncey, repeat what you just said about signing it so that there's a contract.
So, the board could approve the amended contract with the addition of the, uh, five thousand dollar total cap, authorize the chair to sign. Uh, Elizabeth can make the necessary modifications, send it to Lee, Lee can sign it, send it to Skylar, Skylar can review it, and if he thinks that there's a a necessity to have a further conversation, he can indicate that to the board.
I think Joe made a motion to take out that paragraph, what happened to that motion?
There are motions on the table yet.
Bet you don't have a second.
No.
Okay, Joe, repeat your motion.
My motion was to eliminate that second par, this paragraph on page two that my copies highlighted in red and to add the wording of five thousand dollar cap on everything.
All services. All services and fees.
All services and fees, okay.
Suzie, did I, I sent that to you in the email tonight, tonight?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
You did.
Did you have a chance to review it?
Yes, I did.
Good.
So basically, Joe, all you want to do, all your motion says is you're going to make sure it's firm with a five thousand dollar cap.
Yes.
And that's it?
Yes.
He wants to remove that second paragraph in red on page two.
Hers might not have showed up in red.
Oh, okay, the second paragraph where it says the firm will consult on page two.
I don't have that.
Go to page two. The firm will consult the county attorney prior to representing the client or its officers in any filings, hearings, proceedings, or any activities. Yada, 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 have you got that paragraph?
So that's what you want, the motion, what you want to include that in your motion?
Yes, to eliminate that, to eliminate that.
Oh.
Sorry, we will be.
Do you understand what I was talking about, Suzie?
Yes, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
So is there something that you would insert in his place or not?
No.
Not enough, it's not. I wish I could be there with you guys, just to be with you, and, uh.
I didn't catch what she's, I didn't catch what she says.
I I did, I wish I could be there with you, but I'm not today, I'm sorry.
Oh.
She's horse skating in a buffalo herd.
You mean you're kind of there?
Well, no, that could be too. All right, so, um. For the record, I don't have a problem with that paragraph. If there was a way to rewrite it, that that might, uh, do you, the last line, is that a problem, Joe? The firm will also copy the county attorney on, to begin, I. I mean, if if the firm was to copy the client, which is us. You see what I'm saying? Why would we not want our attorney? It's it's not a secret, it's what I'm saying.
It shouldn't be a secret.
So is the county attorney going to be having any say-so in any of this, or they just gonna sit back and see the proceedings and stuff? Are you gonna try to interject and have an influence over this?
In what capacity, that that clause says that the communication is CC my office. So I I represent you, and I represent the county, uh, I'm not gonna pine as far as what the future holds with this, hopefully, nothing. So, uh, honestly, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill here.
I agree with you, we are.
So, yeah, I I don't know why you would want to intentionally, you know, box out.
Why would you, why would you wanna be included, I can, I can turn the question back to you.
Why would I wanna be included on legal matters involving county, Joe? Cause it's my job to make sure that this ends up in the in the best possible way for us.
Okay, there's a motion out there, there's gonna be a second or not, I'll just see.
Well, I would like, what I would like to do is, if, if you're agreeable, is to amend, amend your motion to approve it other than having the five thousand dollar cap cover all legal fees and services, and then authorize the chair to sign, and Mr. Skyler, that's, the, 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 the firm, review, which he's expressed some concerns, given us then the opportunity to have a conversation with him to see if there's any changes that we can make to that, but there's a contract in place so that he can provide the scope of services that he's listed. And he can, and at that point, we can have a conversation, and it may get drawn altogether. But if he has some concerns, or if he sees a way of doing it differently, I would like to know what that is.
I'll accept that amendment.
And then, you know, and it may be that it ends up ultimately getting, getting struck, I don't know what Mr. Skyler, I don't know what the firm's, um, schedule is like, I'm more than willing to have the conversation, and there may be something that would satisfy all parties involved, and I'm perfectly willing to hear what that might be, or what it would look like. But I do think that we should have any information that may be pertinent, and, and I agree with Bart a hundred and fifty percent, he, this, this is a pre-suit, um, contract. But, we're not saying that the firm would do any filings, or hearings, or proceedings, or any activities in any federal, state, or local court, what we're saying is, is that we need the information before those filings occur, whether ICAS doing the filings, or whether we're doing the filings, or whatever. Not indicating that miss, that, that the firm is going to do that, and we're not expecting um, Smith to do that, that's not what, what's being sent here. And I don't, I would not wanna put anything, I don't wanna put words in his mouth or anything of that nature. But if, if he's going to communicate with us, meaning the client, I have an obligation as well to protect the county, and information that we receive that might be relevant, if we're involved in a lawsuit, I have to give to the attorney's office.
Point well taken.
And I am more than happy to sit down with, with, with the attorney and, and rewrite this to, 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 you know, to hear his concerns and, 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 and maybe get a, 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 a more definitive understanding of what it is.
That would be no more than fair to have his input, too.
And, but at the same time, at least there would be an agreement in place that would allow him to proceed. If he chose to do so, he hasn't signed it yet, so he hasn't accepted it. It gives us the opportunity to talk, it gives Bart the representation on the scope of services that's laid out that he needs. And, and we can meet whenever is convenient for you and for Skyler. Tomorrow wouldn't work unless it was in the afternoon, but.
I thought he was out of the office.
Well, as the mail said, till the twenty-sixth, you're right, yeah. But, you know, whatever works.
You might be able to call in.
Yeah, well, again, I don't know what he's, all I'm saying is, is that it, it gives the opportunity to move forward, him and us to have a conversation specifically regarding that, or any other questions that the board may have, or that Bart has. It gives him the contract, the scope of services can be performed or initiated from our perspective after, after we amended on the five thousand dollar cap on all fees and services.
Just so I'm clear for the, for the motion here, the motion is to approve the contract as amended with the addition of a, and I'm quoting here, five thousand cap on all services and fees to that provision, and then to authorize the chair to sign.
Yes, that's my amendment. Um, and then, in that, we can also add it so that it's on the record to meet with the firm to further discuss this paragraph, paragraph two on page two, the contract, which he has expressed he has concerns with. And we may amend that then, based on conversations that we have with him.
Get all this down. I agree to it.
So, that's just a second, okay. And then, Bart, will you have an opportunity to see what his schedule is like?
He has a bit check with Skyler.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion, a second, Susie, anything?
Yes, no, that, that's fine.
All those in favor say aye, aye? Pose, same sign? Okay, so, uh, will you have, Elizabeth?
I'll have her punch in that five thousand dollar number, get it to you, uh, hopefully before noon.
Okay, and then, we'll meet with Skyler, I'm sorry, with, with Walter. You know, why I have so much trouble with his last name? To discuss him changing his last name and also paragraph two or page two, and, and he may have some, like I said, he may have an idea, or, you know, express what his concerns are, or whatever, and so we'll have an opportunity to make a decision on it at that point. Doesn't preclude removing it, it just gives us an opportunity to meet and discuss it, let them see what.
Yes.
All right? There's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move. Oh, I'm sorry, better get Susie's name down there, so we know she was here.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, I have to go.
Thank you, Susie.
Well, there you have it, it appears all involved have the intention of protecting the county. As I mentioned in my opening segment of this podcast, county attorney Chauncey Molding was sitting to my right, my immediate right, and I took the opportunity off camera to invite him on today's episode for comment. He declined. I also invited him to come on camera to talk about anything he is able to discuss. He declined, but did say to me to reach out to him in the future for any quotes. Thank you for watching, make sure to give this episode a like, and to follow and subscribe, it's free, and I truly appreciate you. Thanks to my sponsors, Griner Auto, Griner, Griner Autobody, Car Doctor, McDonald Boneyard, Your Choice Family Restaurant, Gerling Repair, B and B Propane, and the family of Jet Stops, CW Tree Trimming LLC, Dutch Market, and Coffee Talk. I'm your host, John Bain, stay friendly, Southeast Iowa.